Good evening and welcome to this presentation brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. Tonight, we're going to hear from the candidates who are running for Ojai Unified District School Board. Now, we were planning to have four candidates Rebecca Chandler, Jeffrey Starkweather, Shelley Griffin, and Shani Drive. Gianni Drive, we have not had Gianni join us yet. And according to league rules, we cannot do a forum with only one person. So Shelley is standing by if Gianni does is able to join us, then we'll be able to include them as well. But at this point, we're going to go ahead and start. And thank you all for watching tonight. And at this point, I'd like to introduce the President of the League of Women Voters, Betsy Patterson.
Good evening, I am happy to welcome you all on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. 100 years ago, the 19th Amendment was ratified, giving women across the nation the right to vote. We hold the right to vote precious since not all people were given that right in the original constitution. And for 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been dedicated to encouraging civic engagement and informing voters about the candidates and the issues. From its beginning and continuing today, the League is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any particular candidate or any political party. Each of us has a voice in our government, and that is our vote. To be informed voters, we must ask questions of the candidates and understand the pros and cons of each ballot proposition before we cast our vote. This is your opportunity as voters to learn about the candidates and where they stand on issues that are important to you. Thank you for joining us tonight. We hope you have many of your questions answered by the candidates. And please be sure to make a plan to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. We'll now begin with our opening statements. We're going to start with Jeffrey Starkweather. And Jeffrey, whenever you're ready, you have a minute and a half. And can you see the timer on your screen?
I can.
Perfect, whenever you're ready, please.
Okay, I'm Jeffrey Starkweather. This is the first time that Miners Oaks and Miramonte has been able to have its own representative on the school board. Up in town now, virtually everyone on the school board has come from Ojai. We have a somewhat unique community of middle class and moderate income people and higher percentage of minorities. I grew up here. I went to school at Miners Oaks, graduated here. And I feel that's the most important priority is to be able to represent this community. And I know it well, I have a lot of friends still here. My mother was the head of the PTA at Miners Oaks in Mattelaha. Since I left, I became a newspaper editor and publisher. And also a civil rights and disability attorney. And in that process, I represented parents and students and teachers and librarians in public schools. I also had 20 years' experience in governing boards. I want to use that experience to be able to represent the people in Miners Oaks and Miramonte, many of whom do not feel they have been listened to, particularly parents and people who are not, don't have kids in the schools. There's a feeling of a lack of transparency in the public schools, and I want to be their voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Rebecca Chandler.
Thank you for your time and consideration. As a community, if we want children to acquire the values we hold dear, it comes from the classroom. I've dedicated my life to education, became a credential teacher, stayed up late nights writing grants to bring millions of dollars to the kids of Ventura County. I'm completing a doctorate degree at USC in education. I've worked with labor unions for the past seven years to bring apprenticeships to the high schools. As a mother, I know handing our babies to their kindergarten teacher is one of the hardest days of our lives. Education experts guiding our schools will empower Ojai Unified to realize the ideals we want to see become a reality. As a mother of three sons, I know the opportunity I wanted them to have, and I will be the voice for the students who are currently underserved. All my sons have attended or are currently in Ojai schools. I am supported by leaders in education across the county. I know what it takes to bring compelling programs to Ojai Valley because I've built them already. The school board is a team of five people who are willing to work together regardless of differences. And I want all students to have equity and access and opportunities in their programs. And it will allow them to get higher paying jobs or go to college or whatever they desire. As a member of the board, my responsibility is to direct the school district for all those moms and dads and working class people of our town that make it the beautiful community it is.
I'm going to take a moment for the audience here to share a screen showing the actual district map. So tonight, we're hearing from the candidates in District 2, that is this green area. And also District 4 is on your ballot, and that is this larger light blue area. Whenever I do this, it's like a color test, see how well I know my colors. But as best I could say, that's a green and a blue areas 2 and 4. If you do not live in one of those two districts, you will not be voting for any of these candidates. However, keep in mind that they still represent you and your children. And so it's important to know who would be on your school board so that you can ask for their help later. We're going to begin with questions at this time. And Rebecca, we're going to start with you. Rebecca, what is your strategy to reverse the district enrollment decline?
Declining enrollment is a problem that faces the majority of districts in California. So the best way to reverse this trend is to create compelling programs. Compelling programs that attract and keep our students in schools. So I would work with the superintendent to continue to create more STEM programs, more CTE programs, more various AP courses and other courses that are important for our community. I think as long as we continue to build our schools, all of them, not one of them, not two of them, but all of them, and make them what our community is asking for, we will bring back some of the students we've lost. However, a lot of our families have moved away because it is very expensive to live here. And that's something that I don't know that we could reverse, but we are a school of choice, which allows for families from all over the county to come here if they so desire. So I would continue to improve all of our programs, applying for grants, bringing in more money, working with the community, bringing in community leaders, bringing in internships and apprenticeships for our students so that they have opportunities when they graduate to go on and do great things in our community, also helping our local industry partners by bringing in more skilled labor for them.
Thank you. Jeffrey, same question to you, if you want to unmute. And we will ask you, what is your strategy to reverse the district enrollment decline?
Well, one-fourth of the students in the Ojai Valley who live here do not go to our schools. And of course, we're surrounded by other communities that we can recruit students from. I believe we need to get the community together to understand why we've lost students and what kinds of programs the parents would need. So we don't have a strategic plan for the school system. We don't have a strategic plan for how we're going to add students. Basically, my observation is we've been managing declines. My strategy is to develop with citizens possibly magnet-like schools in our elementary schools, having different emphasis. Secondly, utilize our two biggest strengths. One is our environment and environmental advocacy. And the second is our arts and music and so forth. I propose something that's called deeper learning, where you take what you're studying in school and you apply it practically. I think we could develop these programs in it, not only using capital funds to build buildings that are related to those, but we could do a parcel tax. And the parcel tax law has changed, so citizens initiated, you only need 55%, which could help fund these programs. Plus, we ought to be promoting Proposition 15, which could bring in or well bring in between 800 and $1.5 million per year in operating funds by 2025.
Thank you, Jeffrey. I'm going to start the next question with you, Jeffrey. So tell us a little bit about what you hope to accomplish if you are elected, you know, not just your vision, but what are your real goals? How will you go about accomplishing those efforts?
Well, I think my biggest strength is that I have been a community activist since I've been here. I've worked very closely with the town board, with citizen groups on environmental initiatives, on affordable housing, on arts programs, on dealing with the climate crisis. And so I want to use that strength that I have of working with the community. It needs to be more collaboration with the city. For an example, with the aquatic center. In order to really make it work, the city and the schools need to work together. So my strength, I think that's my biggest strength. I've also served on governing boards for 20 years, something my opponent has never done. And you learn a lot about how to work with other people in a collaborative fashion. You don't get what you need done by just working with the people on the board. The people on the board need to go out into the community and bring in other folks to help us expand programs. For an example, there's no reason why Ojai is essentially an outdoor classroom. And of course, the town has promoted this climate park. We ought to be bringing in activists, be working with teachers and vice versa, teachers going out in the community. The same thing with arts, culture, music. So I think it's basically my organizing activist skills will be of most value to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, share with us some of what your goals are if you were elected to the school board. How will you go about accomplishing them?
Great, thank you. So I have several goals in being elected to the school board, but I do want to start by saying that I've served on many governing boards, including Ace Charter High School, where I was a board member. So just wanted to set that record straight. The first would be to definitely continue and increase the amount of grants we're applying for because a big piece of that, building new programs and building better schools is having the resources and funding to do so. Since we're currently going out for a bond, I don't believe I would want to do a parcel tax on top of that because I feel like we would be overtaxing our community. But we will see how the bond goes during this election. I would also work with our local industry partners, which we have several of. So I have created an environmental pathway that's already in and functioning at Nordoff High School when I was working at the County Office of Education. I also created a digital arts pathway at Nordoff High School as well through the County Office of Education. I would continue to support fiscal responsibility. It is very much on my priority list to make sure that we are spending taxpayers' money appropriately and correctly. And I would continue to bring in industry partners to support our kids and show them the opportunities that exist in our town.
Thank you. And I'm just going to ask everyone to sit tight for 15 seconds while I try to get Gianni the right link and get her connected.
Hi there.
Okay, see, I'm the perfectly technological magician. Thank you for logging in, Gianni. We're going to bring back Shelley and we'll keep this party going. So stand by, everybody stand by, and we'll get Shelley back in here. See, it's all coming together, how smooth. Gianni, I'm David Marin, moderator. We've already started with opening statements. We're into some of the questions, I'm going to bring you both in. I'll give you a little extra time for both of you later to share a little bit more about your platforms. To the audience, thank you very much for your patience. I think this will be a much better program. I want to point out that both Gianni and Shelley are running in Area 4. That was the larger blue section that I said earlier. And Gianni, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes, you are, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we just heard from Jeffrey and Tiffany about some of their goals for next year. And according to the way we drew numbers or to the names earlier, Gianni, you'll be first. So Gianni, the question to you is, please share with us what you hope to accomplish if you are elected? And how will you actually go about achieving that?
Yeah, thank you. So some of the things that I think about, especially if I think of five years, 10 years from now for the Ojai School District, I'm really thinking about support systems for underserved and underrepresented populations, for homeless students, foster foster youth, and thinking about support for educators around these issues as well. Trauma-informed training, cultural competency training, ethnic studies is a high school graduation requirement. I'm thinking about things that students and parents are asking for and things that create a brighter future for more exceptional learning for all of our learners.
Thank you. And Gianni, I didn't ask you, but if you and Shelley make sure that you're in gallery view so that you can see our timer. Okay, excellent. And Shelley, we will go to you and ask you about the same thing. If you're elected, what would be one of the, some of your goals, how will you go about accomplishing those?
So my goals are really in regards to putting us on better financial footing for our school district. As everybody knows, we have, and I heard in the last question, that we have declining enrollment, which is true, but I would like to let everybody know that in the last couple of years, we have really plateaued in that area. And in fact, having increased our numbers last year, and this year, our kindergarten numbers are holding tight. And that's a great indicator of where we're headed. So my issue is really with looking at how we can serve our population. And we all know that to do that, we need the funding. And so in that, I'm looking at the district office property. I think it's really important that we have robust conversations about how to bring in revenue to our district. I think it's really important that we support Measure K and in order to bring maintenance costs down in our district so that we can spend that money in our classrooms and to recruit quality excellence teachers. Because that's the only way we can really create the innovative programs that we have begun. We are currently bringing in students to our Summit Independent School that weren't in our district before.
Thank you, Shelley. Okay, we're going to begin the next question with all four of you. We're going to start off with Rebecca. And the question is about representation and equity. Can you share with us what you think about making sure that the board is properly representing the community, that everyone's voice is heard? And if you could tie in with that, some of the things we're seeing nationally as far as social injustice, racial equality. Tell us about your philosophy and views, how you operate as a board member.
Equity and access is critical to our school boards. Students, when they see themselves represented in our teaching population, in our administration, in our school board, they realize and recognize that they can do it themselves, right? It is a very powerful moment. I am a first generation on my mom's side. She's from Ireland, and my dad's side is of Cherokee descent. So I remember the day when I was in college and I had my very first Native American professor and blew my mind that our people did this because I was a first generation college student. So I have worked tirelessly. I was an EL teacher. I worked for Oxnard Union. I have guided the majority of my education career to support students in need. And I think these are, you know, our minority students, our EL students, our students who are learning English. Are all of these kids need support desperately. And so I really, really am a huge proponent of equity and access for our kids. There are many different programs that we could bring in. I know Ojai Unified is trying to address these concerns currently. And I know that they're looking through an equity lens and want to continue doing that. And in my work and my education has been primarily focused, especially my doctorate degree, on equity and access in schools.
Thank you. Shelley, same question to you. Tell us about what you'll do as a board member in the areas regarding representation, equity, social justice.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to tell you a bit about myself from, since I missed my chance for an opening statement. Because I've worked a lot in equity and access and bringing policies and practices for inclusion in our district. I have, when I very first began my term on the board, I worked hard to change our enrollment practices to better protect the privacy of our most vulnerable families. And I've worked to push inclusive practices and policies for our LGBTQ students. I absolutely recognize that equity and access is important. And I have recently acquired, earned my Master's of Arts in Education with a focus on social justice and leadership. And part of that, I had the opportunity to talk with activists in Santa Barbara who brought ethnic studies to the Santa Barbara School District as a graduation requirement and looked at what it took to get that program involved at the school district and what the obstacles are for Ojai so that I would be able to better serve our community in bringing those programs to our school district.
Thank you. Jeffrey, we're going to go to you next. Same question to you, as far as if you were on the board and if you'll unmute, then we'll go ahead and get started. But same question, as far as what's your views if you were elected to the board? And how would you promote representation of all? What would you do in the areas of social justice, racial equality, et cetera?
Okay, just before I get into that, I just want to remind everybody that I was a civil rights attorney. I've spent my entire career advocating for those kinds of issues, but that's irrelevant to what I would do. I think it's important to get minority voices, low-income voices, all those kinds of voices at the table and being listened to. I was fortunate today to get endorsed by Roy Rodriguez with the Alliance. He's not representing them, with the Alliance for Equity, because I have said they need to have a voice at the table. And just like we have our unions get up there and tell us what they're doing every meeting, we should have them, a representative of them, saying what ought to be done. The other one, we've had these issues of racial intolerance at our schools. And doing restorative justice between individuals is not the answer. We have to incorporate, and I think as Gianni said, into our educational process that people understand the real history of how we've gotten to be the way we are. As a representative of Miners Oaks, with the highest percentage of Hispanics, I am concerned that our elementary schools are somewhat not equal in terms of their representation. I would like to be working at making a better demographic distribution of students in our elementary school. So all schools have a good mixture of people, different backgrounds and incomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to you, Gianni.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's honestly really inspiring to hear that everyone has this shared commitment and dedication to equity issues in our school district. It is really important. It's really important right now. It's been important for a long time. And especially, as you had mentioned, kind of the historical moment that we're in, looking at equity and inclusion is incredibly important for all of our students. As a person of color who is running for school board, as a young woman of color who's done activism work. In fact, I was a part of that group of people in Santa Barbara working to get ethics studies as a graduation requirement. That was some of the first activist work that I did. I'm the founder of the Ojai Alliance for Education Equity. I have been doing equity work in our community for years. And it's been a huge part of my life because I'm an impacted person. I'm someone who's impacted by equity issues. And so I, of course, think that these issues are incredibly important. And I show up and do the work for it too, and that's part of my history. I'm an anti-racism educator, and I do that work now as well. So I'm absolutely committed to the work of equity and inclusion.
Thank you. And Shelley, we're going to begin with you on the next question. And want to take a moment to learn a little bit about your background, your experience. Please share with us a little bit about your education or your experience regarding the ways, particularly in the ways that we could try and change outcomes so that student achievement is even higher with greater success. Share with us your background that you think will help students achieve more.
So I have over 20 years' experience in the Ojai Unified School District. I worked at Nordoff many years ago as a special education instructional assistant. And I have four children who have gone through the school district. I continue to have two daughters that are attending Nordoff currently with multiple family members in the junior high and elementary schools. So I have a broad understanding of the needs of the district and how to serve students. And as to experience and the outcomes of students, I really have spent a lot of my educational time in my master's degree learning about learner-centered education and focusing on how to meet the needs of students through learner-centered, project-based learning. Hands-on learning, we know, is a profound way to have deep learning for our students. And that includes internships and, like I said, project-based learning that allows students to really delve into where their interests are. Because students learn best when they are engaged and interested in the topic. And by allowing more choice in projects, they are able to access education that we can't just, we can't handle any other way.
Thank you. And Gianni, we'll go to you next. Please share with us a little bit about your background, your experience, your education, and how you help, how you believe that will help promote student success.
Thank you, yeah. So I guess one of the first things that comes to me is my personal kind of investment in running for school board. Personally speaking, I was a teen mom. I'm former foster youth. I have been impacted by homelessness. I have been impacted by institutional barriers in education. And so I think one of the most important things is that being someone who is deeply and personally impacted by these issues, I'm able to really come from a place of experiential knowledge, understanding what actually impacts students and how we can remedy those issues. Beyond that kind of personal experience that I have, the professional experience that I have is community work and organizing, doing work as an educator in my community. I have kind of been at the forefront of making sure that we do have students who are succeeding despite and almost because of the challenges that they faced. I really believe that all learners have the ability to be exceptional learners. And you know, there's no degree that can teach you what it's like to go to school hungry. There's no degree that can teach you what it's like to not know where you're going to live next month. There's absolutely no degree that can teach you what it's like to really struggle to get an education when you're a person of color, when you're poor, when your parents aren't around, or when you're dealing with any of the institutional barriers that students face every single day in our district.
Thank you. Rebecca, we'll go to you next. Please share with us what you think and your background, or tell us a little bit about your background, your experiences, and how you think that will help students succeed.
So my background and experience, I've been in education for 12 years. I have a teaching credential, I have an administrative services credential. I am completing a doctorate degree in educational leadership. I have studied student achievement in multiple different ways and have lived it day to day because that is the crux of what we do as educators. So I would, I would say my hats off to both Shelley and Gianni because they hit on two very important things, which is, one, project-based learning. Kids have to touch it, see it, live it, and it has to be relevant to them, right? And we have to have culturally relevant curriculum and materials that they want to be engaged in. So when we're looking at the achievement gap and we're looking at where we're missing it for our kids, we can turn to the dashboard, we can look at the subgroup populations. We can see, you know, maybe our English language learners aren't doing so well in math. And how can we directly impact, change our curriculum, change that to make our outcomes better for those kids particularly? So you can look at all of the subgroups, be able to alter your curriculum, come back, retest, and then look again and see if what we're doing is hitting that or not. And this is a national problem, especially when we look at, we used to look at schools, all students at one time. And now, now we have broken it down so that we can see kids in subgroups. And this gives us an opportunity to improve their learning.
Thank you. Jeffrey, we'll wrap up this question with you. Share with us your experience, your education. What do you think that will help students or promote student success?
Well, you may not believe it, but if they had exceptional education, I would have been in it. I was in speech therapy and reading therapy. I didn't read until the fourth grade. But actually, I think I experienced exactly what most kids experience in schools was boredom. And I wasn't engaged. And I became engaged when I got motivated. And I wasn't engaged. And I became engaged when I got motivated myself. I had a son who was ADD and I had to fight years for that. But my biggest experience working with kids was as an attorney representing kids with disabilities, on IEP meetings, families that were having, struggling, the way the school was dealing with them. Obviously also learning the results of bad, bad education with representing criminal defendants, who almost in every single case had not been given opportunities in education. So I've seen the results of what happens when we don't do it. I'm really glad that everyone is adopting deeper learning because I think that is the missing link to what we've done in education. We have destroyed education and deeper learning by teaching the tests, by narrowing the curriculum. We have gone the wrong direction for the last 30 years, in my opinion. So I'm a big believer in the way we can get kids engaged in deeper learning, project-based learning, using your community for learning. And I think I have a lot of experience doing that when I worked workforce development and other things. So that's the direction I think we ought to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, I'm going to start the next question with you. We talked about this a little bit earlier with the decline in enrollment. But I think that we have several questions here that the audience wants to understand. How would you go about turning around schools so that they become the type of attraction that people move into the district? So their kids could go there rather than people in the district sending their students elsewhere or to private schools? How will you make the schools that magnet that brings in more students?
So I am going to avoid the word magnet schools because that, that detracts from equity because I'm a, I'm a big firm believer that all schools need to improve. So how do we improve our schools? We start with making sure our teachers, like everybody is getting professional development, which I know that the school district right now is, has a very aggressive professional development initiative that they've moved forward. So the professional development with teachers, we make sure that we're teaching 21st century skills, that our kids are, we're teaching things that are relevant to today, right now, right? We have to, like, I think the bond is a huge step in the right direction because our schools are, are in a lot of cases dilapidated. They're very old and they need a lot of updating. So I applaud the district for going after a bond. Once we get the schools up and beautified, then we have our professional development. Then we start, we really, all through this way, we need to bring in our community. Ojai has a very unique, beautiful, amazing community of people. We have artists, we have, we have spiritual people. We have all kinds of amazing community members that would bring so much to our schools. People want to come to Ojai. And if we can incorporate why they want to come to Ojai into our schools, which I know we're trying to do, it would really attract more students. Thank you.
Shelley, same question to you. What are some of the policies you might put into place to attract more students to, or attract their families to move here? Attract students to stay here rather than go elsewhere?
So I'm grateful for that shout out from Rebecca on Measure K. I am really proud to have brought that to the ballot this November because it is, it is very much needed. We can have the greatest programs, but if any family walks into a classroom where ceiling tiles are falling down, it's, they're not going to see the program. They're going to see the facilities. It's very difficult to sell a program that way. And I'm also very proud of our initiatives with Summit Independent School and which has brought in over 100 students into the district. Parents and families are looking for alternative options. And I am happy that our district has created those options. I'm also really proud of our CTE pathways. Want to give a quick shout out to Ms. Hoy. My daughter happens to be in her dance program currently. And I am amazed at what they can do and what they're bringing into the district, understanding what industry is doing currently in the entertainment industry, in this case, with, with dance and with green screen and editing, bringing those dancers together, even though they are far apart in reality because of COVID, and teaching the students those skills that are being used in industry currently. Those are the programs that I am looking to continue.
Thank you. Jeffrey, same question to you. As far as what do you think, what kind of policies can you put into place to help attract more students to the area and more families as well?
Okay, I think that the first step is to find out, we have lost one fourth of our students, why those students go there. I don't know that we've ever really asked those parents. The other is to look at what kind of programs do parents want? I think we need a community-wide effort involving our arts and environmental community and everybody to come together and say, what is, what, what strategies would we want to incorporate? What kinds of programs would attract students? There may also be research on this as well. When it talks about the bond, I think it's great that we fix up the building. It's important. Actually, the bond advisor said, one of the things you can do is do certain kinds of buildings that are related to the program, say like a performing arts center, that actually will bring in people. I'm not suggesting that's the thing, but I think we need to listen to people. I think we should not ignore a parcel tax. We now know, which was not presented when the school board discussed this, that you can pass a parcel tax with 55% if it's initiated by citizens or by the school members themselves. And all you need is 1,500 signatures. Every meeting I've ever been to complains about operating funds. Capital is not operating funds. If you want to add programs, I think operating funds. Again, I would go to our arts community and our environmental community to develop programs that are deeper learning that would attract students related to those. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianni. We'll wrap up this question with you. What are some of the specific policies you would put into place to attract more families and students?
Well, I think honestly, it's a little bit of all that I've heard. I feel like a community-centered approach is really important to me. I feel really strongly about bringing community in before bringing other solutions to the table. We want to listen to our community. In fact, you know, we had our community kind of rally around Miners Oak School not that long ago. And that, I think, brought this conversation about how important it is to talk and listen to community and their needs and, and what they're asking for from our schools. So that would definitely be one of my first thoughts is kind of that community-centered model. But also I think it's important to, you know, I support Measure K. I think it's important to make sure that our infrastructure, our facilities are up to date and have the repairs they need. I also think we need to invest in updated curriculum. I think we need to invest in curriculum that brings us forth into the future, what students are really asking for. I want to see, like Rebecca said, professional development continue in an aggressive way that actually prepares educators for the future as well. We should all be prepared to have conversations that are taking place right now in our national context, but also thinking about civil, you know, like that civil education that, that we don't get. We kind of do a lot of character education, but we don't really focus on civil education. And there's a lot of components to me that feel really important when we talk about what do parents want right now. And as a parent in our schools right now with small kids, I talk to a lot of parents and I hear a lot about what their needs are. And I think all of these things bring really true.
Thank you, Gianni. We're going to stay with you for the next question. And the question is around the subject of strengths in the area of actually true board management. The board actually hires a superintendent. The superintendent implements policies. Boards usually set vision and all that. But boards are responsible for managing budgets, looking at personnel issues, negotiations. Can you share with us, not so much the classroom side, but the management strengths that you bring, or at least policies that you would like to put into place to better run the district?
Yeah, absolutely. So of course, as a first-time candidate, I've never worked with our school board budget before. I've never sat on our school board before. So there's a lot that I would have to learn and it would be a learning curve for me. I have no shame in admitting that. And I also think that being somebody who is impacted by the issues, impacted by challenges, it's really important to have someone like me on the management end of what the school board does and the decisions that we make together in a collaborative way. Without the voices of impacted people in our community, the school board cannot make decisions for impacted students in a way that really positively then impacts them. So for me, when I think about management and my skills that I bring, I really think about the experiential knowledge I bring, the professional knowledge I bring around what it actually takes to get better outcomes and better support for students who are really deeply impacted, especially right now in the middle of the worst pandemic in modern history. So I definitely think that having that representation is important, but also having someone who really deeply understands the problems is incredibly valuable to what we need on our school board right now.
Thank you. Rebecca, we'll go to you next. As far as your strengths, as far as board management, budgets, managing a superintendent, any conflicts there, anything in the sense of where your skills will help you be an effective board member?
Yes, thank you for asking. I currently work as the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services for Ventura Unified. It's a, it's a relatively new position to me. I just got the position not very long ago. So I am personally responsible for $200 million in Ventura Unified's school budget. So I'm quite familiar with budget management. I'm also responsible to serve on the executive cabinet. So I am very involved in bringing issues such as personnel issues, you know, issues of discipline with students, all of those things together. I would also say that I have worked and taken multiple classes at USC on just this, board management and superintendent relations. So getting your board to work together as a team and not being a individual unit, but you are a team and you are a team along with the superintendent and working together for common goals and not fighting amongst yourselves is, is the A number one issue, right? We should be on one team, working for the common goal of doing what's right for kids. Period. End of discussion. And we cannot do that individually. We can only do that as a team. So I think knowing the fiscal responsibility that lays on us, knowing all the demands that lays on the superintendent and having a superintendent to guide that is quite capable, we are lucky.
Thank you. Shelley, same question to you. As far as experience and skills you have that would serve you as a board member when it gets into areas of managing a superintendent, budget, those type of things?
I love Rebecca's answer and I'm very grateful to hear that. It is really important to me that the governance team of the board and the superintendent work together. Over these last four years, I have spent countless hours learning about board governance and budgeting and funding and how to support teachers and staff at, from the school board level. And I know that as somebody who has volunteered in schools for 20-plus years and been so involved in, in doing things, it can be very difficult at the board level to not want to be one of the doers in the district. But really, the board's job is to set the vision for the district and require staff to, to meet that vision. We work as a governance team to set those board goals and visions for our district. And we expect that our superintendent will, will manage the district in a way that meets those board goals. And sometimes it's, it's difficult to not want to micromanage and not want to get down into the weeds and, and do things ourselves as board members. But really, our goal, our job is to have the whole district in mind and have a very broad view of the vision for the district.
Thank you. Jeffrey, we're going to go ahead and wrap up with you on this question. As far as sharing your skills, your background, experiences that'll make you an effective board member in the areas of managing budgets, managing a superintendent?
Well, I have served approximately 20 years on governing boards. Economic Development Corporation, Arts Council, County Arts Council, and the Area Workforce Development Board. We hired and evaluated the executive director of those boards. In addition, I ran a business for 11 years, my own business, it was a newspaper. And of course, I had to do budgets and strategies. I think the, the first function you think of a school board is to come up with the strategies. I have been involved in coming up with strategic plans in a number of different contexts, affordable housing, sustainability, or accounting level, land use planning, and economic development plans. And like Shiani said, these were citizen-driven. We went out to the community and got their input and it was a long process, which is my second focus. I would say the one area where I have not seen as much as I would like to see on the board is community leadership, actually going into the community and, and being able to explain to the community, what are the policies? What is the direction of the school board? How are these programs supposed to work? What kind of input would you give? I think that's a critical role of a school board supervisor, trustee, excuse me. And that's something that I have been doing pretty much my entire career. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to move on to the next question. Shelley, you're up first. And the question is about improving the policies that interact with families. We talk a lot about student success, but of course, there's a pivotal role for the families, the parents. And that is something that a school board can have influence on with superintendent. Share with us any particular policies or plans that you have to help parents and families make sure that their students succeed.
So I, I am proud of the work we have done in this area. We have greatly improved our communication with families, implementing Parent Square so that families receive communication in their language of choice and can communicate back with teachers and staff in the language of their choice. We have, we have made great strides in that effort. And I'm also really happy with the, the guiding coalitions so that we have more community participation and improved our community collaborations so that we can serve families better. In the future, going forward, I would like to see more opportunities for board members to, and we've talked about this at the board level already, being on campuses and, and really interacting with families and getting to know the families that are at each individual school district or school site, sorry. I have been involved with families at every school site and, and have really worked hard at making communications and an improved focus for our district.
Thank you. Jeffrey, same question to you. Do you have some policies or techniques that you want to put in place to help the district communicate with parents and families so that their students succeed?
Well, I, in my talking to parents, they don't feel like they're being listened to. I do not like the policy where, like when we had this dispute about the going from seven periods to six periods, we put the Spanish-speaking parents in a different room. There ought to be a way that you can have, like, I know the county does, it's simultaneous translation so they can be in the same room, hear the same questions, and feel a part of it. It was very, I don't know, disconcerting to see the Hispanic people come in the room after, you know, and they weren't part of it. I think we, we need to do more to reach out to poor families, to people of lower economic families, people Spanish-speaking, to get them more involved in the schools. I'm not sure of all the techniques. There are plenty of things that other school districts have done to reach them. I think we also need to be working on preschool and getting families involved earlier. And I think that's one of, you know, we, we know that when kids reach kindergarten, that have come from backgrounds that are not as privileged as others, they're way behind in language and other things. We need to figure out how we can partner with other community groups to, to bring families in early when they're children, before they're in school, and have them feel invited and comfortable into our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Shiani, same question to you. As far as any policies or programs you want to put into place to improve communication with families and parents?
Yeah, so I, you know, one thing that comes up for me when I think about that is when I speak to families, sort of what Jeffrey said, they, they don't feel heard. They don't feel like their voices are being considered, that their stories are being considered, or their experiences. Parents who have children who are neurodivergent don't feel like they're getting enough time, you know, in school or meetings to really talk about what it means to have neurodivergent children right now in our schools during COVID-19. right now in our schools during COVID-19. When I talk to our Spanish-speaking community who I'm engaged with, and I ask them, "Has a board member ever reached out to you?" The answer is always no, that no one is ever reaching these communities. And I don't think it's intentional. I think there's language barriers, there's cultural barriers, and there's all different things that kind of go into play when we think about outreach to families and communities that we're not always engaged with. But we have a large, large community of Spanish speakers in Ojai and in the school district. In fact, almost half of our students are identifying as Hispanic and Latino. And so we have to actually prioritize engagement with communities who are taking a lot of space in our communities and needing the attention and care. So for me, I really envision a community model in which we are actually prioritizing Spanish-speaking families in our district, actually speaking with them and actually giving them the resources that they need.
Thank you. We'll wrap up with Rebecca. Your thoughts or plans, programs you want to put in place to improve communication with families and parents?
Yes, thank you so much. My best practice with board policies is that board policies are annually reviewed, right? They are a fluid document. They are not to be, we have to avoid doing what we have always done and continually review our policies to make sure that they're culturally relevant, to make sure that we're doing everything that ed code is dictating to us because that is forever changing. So I do want to give props to the district for bringing in Parent Square because that allows the district to communicate directly with families in their language of choice, which is a huge bonus. Also, I just want to correct from my opponent. The families that night were actually separated because that was their choice. They didn't want to do two languages at one time. They preferred to have the Spanish language in the opposite room. So that was an ask of the Spanish-speaking families. So also, I would say there are multiple tools for surveying families and getting their input directly. As we develop and create board policies, we should be asking our families, "Hey, what would make you feel more comfortable? What events could we have? How could we make you feel more a part of our schools?" And this comes from customer service, right? This comes from our families feel welcomed and warm and cared for when they walk on that campus.
Thank you. And Rebecca, I'm going to start with you on the next question. And I'm trying to fit two in here so we can wrap up. But the question is, the campus, every school in the country is trying to recover from COVID. And it's not just a question about reopening schools. It's about what can we do to go back to those students and help them recover from what they lost with the closure? And if you could, what's your view about public safety on the campuses, about safety officers? Would you be in agreement to remove them? Or do you feel that they're still appropriate?
So both at one time?
Please, you have a whole minute and a half.
Great. So the first question regarding opening schools, I am working on this problem directly with Ventura Unified right now. It is a very complex problem. We have, we are training our custodial staff to make sure every room is cleaned daily. We are implementing multiple levels of PPE. We're figuring out busing because we have to keep our students separated. We're figuring out stable cohorts so that we're not cross-contaminating people. We're working very diligently to make sure that we have online tutoring so our students don't experience additional loss and they have somebody to reach out to if they need be. This has been, I would say, the hardest and greatest challenge in education in modern history. And so I do applaud our people working really hard to make all of this happen. The second question that you talked about was resource officers on campus. I know that this is a concern. I've discussed it many times in board meetings in Ventura Unified. There is, there are certain programs where resource officers on campus are maybe not dressed in uniform, are carrying weapons, or any of those things on the campus, and they are part of the community as a part of a community outreach program. I favor that. I don't necessarily favor full uniform officers. Of course, Ojai doesn't have any, so it's kind of a mute point for Ojai because they don't have resource officers on campus.
Thank you. Jeffrey, same question to you as far as how you think, what policies you can put in place to help students recover from COVID so that they can make up for lost ground and also your view on resource officers?
Well, the one thing about the COVID which I wish would have been considered, because I've brought it up numerous times, was I think we could have come back earlier if we'd used tents. We could be outdoors having classes because we know that being outdoors is something like 10 or 15 times safer. You could have fans, kids with masks. We could have been coming back to schools early. And I think we ought to still consider that because we live in an environment where it's suitable. We're not in the Northeast. But they've actually done it in the Northeast too, and other places have done it. Obviously, I think there needs to be a really close look at kids that are struggling when they get back with the two counselors, you know, and maybe think about using students like college students that are home, not going to school, maybe they could come in and help tutor some of these kids, or maybe even some of our high school kids, because that's an experience you could really learn by. I'm totally opposed to any law enforcement being on school campuses. Trust breeds trust. When you start distrusting students, that's when you're more likely to get behaviors. I also don't like the idea, and I don't know if they do it, bringing dogs and sniffing people's locker rooms. Again, it's a trust issue. We ought to be working more on getting our kids understanding how the world works, the history of conflicts and so forth, and get them, like Shani said, involved in civic activities related.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And Shani will go to you. Same question to you. What is some of the policies you would like to put in place to help the students actually recover from the ground lost under COVID and your position on resource officers?
Yeah, so I think it's so hard to know what issues students are going to be needing to recover from after COVID. But certainly, when I talk about trauma-informed training for educators and trauma-informed care for students, that is going to be incredibly important. There are going to be a lot of students traumatized by the experience of social distancing, by the experience of maybe having a parent who had contracted the virus, or even maybe getting sick themselves or losing someone to the virus. There's a multitude of factors that will play into the kinds of trauma that students are really going to be experiencing for the long term. So I think investing in trauma-informed training and trauma-informed care is incredibly important. And on the topic of resource officers, I am absolutely opposed to having resource officers on campuses where there are students, where there are youth. I'm someone who went to big schools and was in interaction with police officers on campus. We had dogs sniffing for drugs on high school campuses that I attended, and it did also traumatize students. And it also targeted students of color. It targeted students who look like me, students who are darker than me. And it does give a sense that there is something wrong with you. And I believe that that's a traumatic experience in itself. So I'm absolutely opposed to resource officers or any officers being on campus in a way that penalizes students for living, breathing, and being brown.
Thank you. Shelley, we'll wrap up this question with you. Please share with us any plans, policies you want to put into place to help students recover the lost ground from COVID and also your position on resource officers?
So we have done a robust job on focusing our mental health initiatives for our students and our families. I'm really proud of the work we have done in bringing families into mental health during this COVID time because Shani's right, we need to be trauma-informed advocates for our students and our families. And so the work we have done around mental health that Janine Murphy has brought to our campuses has been really important to me. I also think it's really important that we offer flexibility for our families. Not all families are ready to come back. Not all teachers are ready to come back for varying reasons. And so we have created flexible opportunities for those families who are not ready to be on campus. And while I appreciate Jeffrey's idea of the tents and being outdoors, I think outdoor education is great, and this is an excellent time to really work on that. We have to understand that teachers are concerned for their family's health, and we have a duty to respect teachers and families who are not ready to come back onto campuses. As far as resource officers, we don't have them in Ojai and haven't since I've been on the board, and I don't see them coming back.
Thank you, Shelley. So candidates, we're going to begin the closing statements. Shelley and Shani, you both missed your opening statements. If you both nod your head yes, I'll be willing to give both of you two minutes for your close. Would that appeal to both of you to have a little extra time since you lost out? Okay, so timer, we're going to go to two minutes for Shelley and Shani, and then we'll go back to a minute and a half for Rebecca and Jeffrey. We're going to do this in the reverse order of the opening statements. And Shelley, you will go first for your closing statement. You have two minutes or however much you want to use up two minutes whenever you're ready, please.
First, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters and thank you to all those who are watching tonight to make sure that you understand the issues facing our school district and our informed voters. It's very important that we are all informed in our voting. School districts are the heart and soul of our communities. And I'm grateful to have served my community on the school board over the last four years. I have a deep understanding as a parent and as a school board member of the needs of our district. I look forward to continuing my efforts to bring our district onto firmer financial footing. I have met with our elected officials at the state level, including State Superintendent Tony Thurman and our local representatives Hannah Beth Jackson and Monique Ramon, to let them know of the needs of small districts like ours. And I will bring my passion as a lifelong member of the Ojai community to the decisions about our downtown district office property. Over these four years, I've learned a lot. This job has many facets, and I've spent countless hours learning about school board governance and budgeting and funding and the needs that our staff have and support from the school board. Great districts have school boards that work with their superintendent to make collaborative governance teams, and I'm proud to be part of that team. I am focused on these budget issues because I understand that this determines how our students are served, how we are able to recruit excellent teachers, how we are able to create innovative learning programs for all of our students. Our students deserve leaders who are experienced, educated, and collaborate to bring learner-centered education to our district. And I ask you to vote for me for our school board. And I also ask you to vote yes on Measure K for our kids.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Shani Dry.
Hi. So I have been in the community for the last 10 years. I came here when I was 16 and I stayed ever since because Ojai provided a community that was nurturing, loving, and gave me the ability to be the mother I wanted to be, to be the advocate I wanted to be. And in fact, it's where I began my work in community. It's where I learned my power in community. It's where I learned that I had a voice that deserved to be heard and that mattered. I have worked in our community as an anti-racism educator for the last three years with the Girls Empowerment Workshop. I have founded various community service organizations throughout the Central Coast. I work with students, educators, nonprofits, and businesses to create more conscious spaces, workplaces, classrooms, and communities. Equity and inclusion are incredibly important to me. It's not something that I'm in for opportunity or to put on my resume, but it's because it's personal and it matters to me deeply because it matters to children of our future. It matters for raising generations of people who will come after us, who will fight for something even better than we can even imagine. And so when I think about my run for school board, it's not just because of how much I care about our school district. It's not just because I love Ojai and I love our schools. It's because I remember being a little girl in public school who didn't see anyone who looks like me in our leadership, who didn't see somebody reflected back at me. And it impacted the way that I saw my future. It impacted what I could imagine for myself. And I want to run for school board because I know that having someone who looks like me in our district leadership will change the future for lots of young children of color in our district. When George Floyd died, when we saw black people shot in the streets, when we saw Breonna Taylor get no justice, we all marched. We all stood in solidarity. And now it's time to vote for people like me to be in district.
Thank you, Shani. Stop there. And Rebecca, you're up next. Let's have your one and a half minute closing statement, please.
Thank you. Education is changing rapidly. And while COVID has created many challenges for education and families, it is our families, our teachers and staff, working hard every day to create these opportunities for kids. And I want to say that I'm proud of our community for coming this far. I know what it's like to be an exhausted working mom with kids at home, struggling to get schoolwork done. It's hard, and we make it happen. And I know what it's like to choose between sending my kid into the world while balancing the risks of COVID and the mental health strain that it causes on kids. My years of experience and perspective as a mother and an educator and an Ojai community member gives me the lens to improve schools. I come from a working-class family. I'm a first-generation college student, and I've watched school change lives. I believe in fiscal responsibility and ensuring that our taxpayers' money is used wisely to benefit our kids in our local economy. Schools should open the doors to opportunities, whether it's going to college or trade school, directly to industry, or becoming an artist. We present the opportunities. We teach them the skills. We guide them in the right direction, and they follow their passion and love. This comes from creating strong industry and community connections to the classroom and knowing how to navigate the waters between education and industry, which I have done for the past seven years. I love my community, and if I'm elected, I will serve with great pride. Thank you so much for holding this forum. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Rebecca. And we will wrap up with Jeffrey. Whenever you're ready, Jeffrey?
Yes, I grew up here as a working-class kid. And I was privileged back in those days in the early 60s when California schools were well-funded, when college was actually free. But I was forged in terms of what kind of passion I had with what happened in the late 60s. Martin Luther King getting killed, Robert Kennedy, who I worked on, his campaign getting killed. The traumas that we were going through made me dedicate my life to progressive change. But we've seen a backlash. And what are we facing now? Obviously, incredible racial injustice, climate catastrophe, financial disasters, the almost a threat to democracy itself, autocracy. These students are our future, and that's why I'm passionate about it. I think we need, as Shani said, to engage them like we were in the 60s, maybe because of the Vietnam War. We got engaged in change. They are our only hope, really. And I want to use my time as a retired person where I can work full-time on this as a community activist and try to be engaging the community more, both the parents and the citizens residents in how our schools, thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. I want to take a moment to thank the volunteers who are working with me to bring you tonight's forums. We have Cheryl, Maddie, Pat Essex oversees the Voter Services Department. That's who you met earlier, our president, Ruby, working behind the scenes as well. It takes a lot of people to make these happen, so give them a nice round of applause if you could. I'm going to take a moment to just share a quick PowerPoint presentation that the League has put together to remind everybody about planning your vote. Every registered voter will receive a mail-in ballot. You can return those to a mailbox. You can return it to a secure ballot box or you can drop it off at a voting center. If you choose not to fill out your mail-in ballot, you can still go to a polling center anywhere in the county. They're not quite the same places as your old polling locations. So everybody should have a mail-in ballot sometime this week. You can start dropping those off tomorrow at any of the secure ballot boxes. If you haven't received one by the 16th, please call the Elections Department and ask where it is. The League recommends that you plan to return your mail-in ballot by the 20th so that it gets through the postal system and it gets to the Elections Department. If you do vote by mail, make sure you sign the outer envelope. That signature is very important to make sure your vote is counted. It's important to know that any ballot postmarked by November 3rd will still be counted as long as it gets to the Elections Department by November 17. We also want to point out that these elections may be a little, it may take a few days to get some answers, could even take a week because the state will because the state will be still counting up until November, I think it's November seventeenth. So there's quite a long time, so be patient if you don't see the results right away. There's a couple of important websites you can visit, where'smyballot.sos.ca.gov. You can put in a little information and then you can track where your ballot is when you return it. Was it in the post office? Has it made it to elections? That type of thing. You can also visit votersedge.org. This is a place where you put in your location, your address, and it'll show you all the candidates that are running in your area with some biographical information about each one. It'll also show you all the ballot propositions that are available to you to vote on. Also, the league's website, hellwvventuracounty.org. Click on candidate forums. You can register for any of your our future forums. You can go back and watch a video of tonight's forums that we held for that we held tonight for Ojai. So with that, please make sure that you vote. Make sure if you do it by mail in, you sign the outside of your ballot. And I want to thank all of the candidates tonight and also thank you, Ojai, for watching. I'm David Marin with the League of Women Voters. Good night.